I call to order the meeting of the Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, May 24, 2016 at 5:34 PM. Board members present are Mrs. Vicky Morgan, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, Mrs. Nella Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, myself, Maris Elkhano, and Mr. Fred Roberts and Kenny Fernandez will be joining us shortly. The invocation will be given by Mr. Bailey and the pledges by Ms. Sullivan.
We pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day you've given us. We thank you for your many blessings and your love and your guidance. Lord, we pray now for this time we gather to work on the work of this district. You just pray that you guide and direct us, give us vision and wisdom. Or we pray for the leadership of this district. We just pray that you be with them, guide and direct and protect them. Lord, we pray for the teachers as every day they give all they have, Lord, to educate our kids. And we just pray for the protection of our community. Also, we ask in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Could you please face the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Sorry.
For control.
We will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Codes Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071 to consult with district attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene shortly. Thank you. We now reconvene in open session at 7:02. That will take us to item number three, special recognition.
Board members, I'd like to introduce Gina Williams, who's our Assistant Athletic Director. She will come forward and introduce to you a student and say a few words about this amazing athlete.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. We appreciate you allowing us to be here this evening. It is with great pride that I recognize Justice Henderson from J. Frank Dobie High School. Justice is accompanied by her coach, Coach Tina Knight Gray and Coach Mo Hickman. Justice had an outstanding senior year in track, starting off with a district championship in the 100 meters, long jump, and was a member of the district championship relay teams in the 4x100 and 4x200. At the area meet, Justice was 100-meter champion and a member of the 4x200 meter championship team and finished as a runner-up in the long jump. At the regional meet, Justice soared to a jump of 19 feet 11 inches to finish second, which qualified her for the state meet in Austin this past weekend on Saturday. Justice fell short of meddling after a long day of weather delays due to rain and lightning. However, we are extremely proud of how well Justice represented Dobie High School and Pasadena ISD in Austin. Justice is the first Dobie athlete to compete in the state meet since 2004 when Sofia Rodriguez competed in the triple jump. Justice will continue her track career in college as she has signed a scholarship with the University of Houston. Again, Justice is coached by Tina Knight Gray and Coach Mo Hickman. Congratulations to Justice again for an outstanding track season. Let's give her one last round of applause. And we ask that Justice's parents and any relatives would please stand so that we may recognize you as well. Congratulations. Thank you.
Board members, we also today are going to honor the J. Frank Dobie Speech and Debate Team for their extraordinary success on the state and national circuit. I'd like to introduce the principal Franklin Moses from J. Frank Dobie and Andrew Barrett, the speech teacher and coach from J. Frank Dobie.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Powell, it is with great honor that I recognize the members of the J. Frank Dobie Speech and Debate Team. Before we get started... There's a lot of them. Before we get started, I would love to first thank you for allowing us the opportunity to compete on a national level. Without your support, our success would not have been possible. Thank you again. We will recognize their efforts as a team and highlight the individual awards at the state and national level. Dobie, as it stands right now, has the most national qualifiers in the state of Texas. Here are the names of those who qualified for the TFA State Championship, the NITOC, the National Individual Event Tournament of Champions, and the National Speech and Debate Association Championship to be held in Utah. Rebecca Robertson. Dimitri Brooks. Iasoge Ogbanwan. Ariana Okozobon. Danielle Jones. Destiny Williams. Monica Watson. And Juan Salcedo. And your state champion in dramatic interpretation, Jalen Bolden. Jalen Bolden has also placed third at the Tournament of Champions at the University of Kentucky. And in addition to his fifth place overall at the Tournament of Champions, NITOC, he was a quarterfinalist in original oratory. Jalen also won Harvard University with the highest rankings that Harvard University has ever seen in dramatic interpretation. And Jalen, if you could take a step up. In addition to winning state and multiple national championships, Jalen is also an All-District Football Player and maintains a GPA of 3.7 and has been offered a full-ride scholarship to Wiley College, home of the great debaters. Now, without further ado, many wonder what we do in speech and debate, we will have a special performance from Rebecca Robertson performing her dramatic interpretation. And it's just a little snippet of her 10-minute performance.
Hmm, I've got you under my skin. Yes, I've got you deep in the heart of me, so deep in my heart that you're really a part of me. I've got you. Oh, so this is my class. Well, each and every one of you seems so fine and talented, but I'm just going to jump right on in. So how have you know a former starlet, Ava Gardner? Darling, what about you with the beautiful hair? Yes, you do know about Ms. Ava Gardner?
Uh, yes.
Oh, no? What happened?
Definitely.
No? I heard you. Well, funny fact, it's me. In life, as in chess, forethought always wins. Wise words by famous author John Livingston, but can any of us truly win in the dangerous game that is love? Ava Gardner, a famous movie actress in the 1950s and 1960s slowly realized how her ex-husband Frank Sinatra truly affected her life, and My Story by Ava Gardner.
And one more round of applause for the J. Frank Dobie Speech and Debate Team.
Do we want to get the coaches up here too to take a picture so we can... If you don't mind. Absolutely. Amazing. I may be stealing Coach Barrett's thunder here, but if we have parents of our speech and debate awesome students in the crowd, could you please stand? Any of our parents? All right. Thank you, thank you. I know a lot of hours went into that. Lot of hours. Thank you so much.
And we don't mind a distraction like that anytime.
Well, we've seen some awesome students tonight, and now we're going to talk about some awesome teachers because it's time for our Teacher of the Year introductions. Just so you know, board members, Gulf Coast Educators Federal Credit Union sponsored our Teachers of the Year this school year with some very nice baskets that we took out to the campuses when we surprised them. But tonight, the teachers are going to be recognized here in front of the board, and other vendors and community businesses have wanted to contribute to this also, so we're very fortunate of their participation in this. I'm going to start with the new, our First Year Teacher Awards. So if they'll line up. This is our Rookie Award during that first year of teaching. Think back to that. Some of us in the room can remember all the challenges that come with that. But this award recognizes the individuals who stand out among our first-year teachers in a very positive way. So we have for our elementary new Teacher of the Year, if you'll come forward, from We're going to ask that they stay near so we can get a picture of all of them in the end, so don't let them run off, Dr. Palmer. For our middle school new Teacher of the Year, he's from Snyder Middle School, and If I remember right, Mr. Frazier, you were a police officer, correct, before teaching? So we're glad... Sorry, police officers, he made the switch. We're happy to have him. Intermediate, new Teacher of the Year, Parkview Intermediate, representing our lady teachers, It was fun to get to go around and see all the wonderful things happening in these individuals' classrooms. Our high school new Teacher of the Year is from Sam Rayburn High School, Jo Duda. I hope I said that correctly. Jo. So we want to say congratulations to these fine teachers for making a name for themselves during their first challenging year of teaching. We look forward, and I think Ms. Morgan said it, to many more years in Pasadena ISD and great things from their classrooms for years to come. Board members, we're going to now introduce you to our Pasadena ISD Teachers of the Year. To be designated for this award, the district, it's the highest honor we can place upon a teacher. The award recognizes educators who go above and beyond to have an exceptional impact on the students of Pasadena ISD. Each campus this year nominated a teacher for this award, and then a committee selected the district winners among the nominees. Our district Teachers of the Year will go on to represent Pasadena ISD at the Region Four competition, and they'll be honored at a dinner later in the summer. This one is special to my heart. She taught my child. Our 2016 Elementary Teacher of the Year is from Turner Elementary, and don't come yet because I'm going to say some special words. She's dedicated 33 years of service to this district. And she continues to inspire students and staff as a third-grade teacher at Turner Elementary. She consistently goes the extra mile, and colleagues say she's one of those teachers that students absolutely never can forget. My 23-year-old has not forgotten Mrs. Wright. Congratulations, Patricia Wright, 2016 Elementary School Teacher of the Year.
She taught mine too.
Oh.
And my grandson.
All right. We have another awesome Secondary Teacher of the Year that we want to talk about, Mr. Lloyd Love from Pasadena Memorial High School. And I'm going to say a few words about Mr. Love. If you'll remember, board members, you've met him earlier in the school year for other awards he's received. But as an educator for 32 years, Lloyd Love has used his experiences teaching biology, life science, and PE to expand learning beyond the classroom through an outdoor education class. Students and colleagues alike say that he creates magic with courses that allow students to gain certification in hunting and boating. He was honored this year as the 2016 Dallas Ecological Foundation Educator of the Year. Join me in congratulating Mr. Lloyd Love, our 2016 Secondary Teacher of the Year. Do we have family members of Mr. Loves or Mrs. Wrights here that we can thank for their dedication to our district as well? If you'll please stand, family members. Thank you for sharing your loved ones with us. We're going to get just a couple of pictures. A few pom-poms. Turner, where's the pom-poms? Didn't get the memo? And we have some gifts from you over here from our associates. Thank you again. We have one last special recognition tonight, so stay with me. We are very fortunate in this district to not only have awesome students and awesome teachers, administrators, and staff members, but we're fortunate in Pasadena ISD to work with a school board of this caliber. They are seven of the most dedicated public servants that I possibly have ever met. They each work tirelessly without monetary compensation. They get paid zero, and they do it for one reason: they care about the students in Pasadena ISD. During this portion of the meeting, when we recognize, again, students and teachers for their accomplishments, I think it's appropriate to recognize Mrs. Vicky Morgan, Board Vice President, for 30 years of service in Pasadena ISD as a board member. I'll let her speak, but I have just a few more words. Just so you know, her years of service have played a significant role in the evolution of this school district. Before becoming a board member, she was dedicated to her children and their education as she volunteered in PTA, where she held two lifetime memberships and a national life membership and an extended life membership in PTA. In 1986, she went on and decided to run for the school board. She won the election, making history as the first woman on the board, and she is still making history today, again and again, as the board member who served 30 years in the Pasadena ISD, the first to reach that milestone. Through her tenure as a board member, she has served in a vital role in implementing special programs for students with various needs and encouraging new teaching methods to keep up with the advances in technology. Her passion for education is evident in her advocacy efforts, and she's been a strong advocate for a successful program that raises awareness of bullying in our schools throughout the district. Outside the district, she lends her time and talent as an active member of South Main Baptist Church, where she serves in numerous ministries. She's definitely an advocate for our students and for our staff. She's compassionate about doing what's right, and she's an inspirational woman of those that are lucky enough to know her and cross her path. So we're very thankful for her, and Pasadena ISD is better because of your 30 years of service. And if you don't mind, we've got something on the screen that we want everyone to turn their attention to. I promise I'll stop eventually.
Thank you. Thank you for 30 years.
30 years. 30 years. Thank you for 30 years.
Thank you for 30 years of service.
Thank you for taking care of our teachers, faculty, members, and our principal professors.
Mrs. Morgan, I thank you for 30 years of service. We appreciate you very much because you have led kids become the better person they can be. But we hope you can stay in there more, there in more years.
We appreciate you providing jobs for all these amazing teachers of these amazing schools that you built all across the district.
Thank you for the teachers that you have provided in the Fred Roberts community. Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for 30 years of your service and helping of our school and the Pasadena ISD district and our faculty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan, for our wonderful schools and teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for 30 years of service.
Thank you for making a difference in my life.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan, because all the people at the schools love you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
A little token for you in addition to your beautiful flowers out there, so once again, thank you for all you've done.
Those of you who know me know I don't like recognition, so three times is plenty. I appreciate each and every one of you. I wouldn't have been on this board for 30 years if it were not for many of you sitting out there and for the children in this district. I am so proud to represent a district who cares about kids and puts them first, and I can honestly say we do.
That's all the special recognition we have tonight.
That's it, I promise.
Third time's the charm.
But there's nothing better than those kids up there telling you thank you because that's why you're sitting up here, that's for sure.
That brings us to item number four, public comments. We do have one this evening. If I can please ask Mr. George Taylor to please come up to the microphone. Ms. Morgan will be the timekeeper, and you've got five minutes. Thank you.
With all the pride and education and devotion and commitment in this room, I hate to be the guy come up and whine, but I guess that's the straw I drew. I would apologize for even bringing this to your attention, but I've tried community development, I've tried code enforcement, I've gone to my local community meetings, I've gone to city council meetings, and everybody that I talked to said, "Well, you need to go school board," so here I am. I'm a graduate of Gardens Elementary, Southmore, Pasadena High School. I've been in Pasadena since I was two days old. For the last 30 years, I've been a fence-line neighbor to Queen School, and it was a very joyous thing. You could sit on your back porch, watch the children play, have a good time. Well, they moved Queen School and they put in Nella Sullivan. Now, what I have in my backyard is two 225-ton train air chiller units back there that put out 80 decibels of noise level, which is the equivalent of sitting next to a vacuum cleaner. From what I read on the internet, 70 is harmful to children's or to hearing. It can have a negative impact on hearing. And the playground behind Nella Sullivan, if it is going to be used the same way they use Queen's, which is to have the children in the back, how in the world can they be exposing the children to 80 decibels of noise? Now, I bought a decibel meter and measured it, and with one unit, they tell me putting out 40%, it was 80 decibel. They have two units there that put out, I don't know how much, when both the units are at 100%, but I know you can be in your house and have to put, in bed, and have to put your head under a pillow to end the noise. I complained to the school district. They put a chain-link fence up. I complained again, they put plastic slats in the chain-link fence. I complained again, then they told me they were going to put a sound barrier wall inside the chain-link fence. Well, according to the installation guide for the train units that is published on the internet, the noise is coming from the top of the units, there are 24 exhaust fans there, and putting any noise barrier on the side of the unit is going to be absolutely useless because the noise is emanating from the top of the unit. I've had one neighbor that had aggravated her migraine headache so bad she had to move. I can no longer sit in my backyard and sit on the porch and read a book or enjoy or look at the children because the noise that is emanating from those units is just so severe. Now, when I last talked, they said, "Well, what we will do is we will do some research and see what we can do to abate the noise." Well, according to the train installation guide, it said you build a cinder block wall three foot higher than the exhaust fans to deflect the noise. And I said, "Well, you know, this is just an outside shot, but why don't you do what the manual suggests on containing the noise from the air chillers?" And what's really ironic, and I was trying to get some pictures, but I didn't have them developed in time, is if you're looking at this unit where it has the air chillers directly to the left of it, to the east of it, are the dumpsters, and guess what? They put cinder block walls higher than the unit to contain the noise of the dumpsters. And how can you be worried about the noise being emanated from a dumpster and ignore the...
Brings us to item number two, consideration and possible approval of the percent of midpoint salary increases for the 2016-17 school year.
So move. Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the early college high school district coordinator position, A04-240 days.
So move. Second.
Question.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Kendrick has a question.
Oh, yes. Do we have more than one early college high school campus besides Pasadena High School?
We do not, but you'll remember, as part of our bond, as well as our strategic plan, in 2017, we'll be adding all the other high schools. So, we'll be bringing this person on to get ready for that, because it's going to be a major undertaking, working with our partnership with San Jac. Karen can elaborate on what they'll be doing as we bring these campuses on, but I know screening students, teachers, a lot of that.
That's the main reason we're starting this early. She'll start, he or she'll start August 1st, but this person will do the recruiting for that all four high schools next class. So, that means getting to all of the schools, producing the brochures, and advertising to the eighth graders for the following year, and then helping hire the deans that we hope to hire in December, that'll start in March if we go according to plan, and then just doing all of the work necessary with the architects over that next year to have everything ready for the following year to start the four new early college high schools.
Okay, I understand that, but we just, in this book, have a proposal with no receipt of bids for early high school campuses. And that may or may not be postponed. If that's the case, do we still move forward with this? Because that could be a delay of at least a year.
I believe, and Dr. Powell can correct me, that if the building would be delayed, then we would delay that also, because this would be a job that would start the year before the early college high schools start.
They would go hand in hand together. I know Mr. Fornoff's going to explain a little bit more about how we're proceeding with the bid process, because we didn't have the success we needed, but they would go hand in hand. We're not going to bring this person on until we're ready to open doors.
Thank you.
And since this is a new position, so we have a new complete job description for this individual?
Yes. I have job descriptions with me, if you would like to see those. Do you want me to pass those around?
No.
Did I misunderstand something just now? We're not going to bring this person on until we're ready to open the doors?
Well, we're bringing them on a year ahead of time to recruit and to make sure we're ready, and San Jac's ready. This is a huge undertaking, not only by our district, but San Jac to college as well. But if we're finding out through the bid process we're not going to be ready, then we would postpone the position as well. Our hope is, and we feel like now that we're breaking that up, and we'll talk about that
Anybody want a new job?
That concludes, and thanks to all of you for being here, and congratulations to each and every one of you.
You mentioned secrecy, and we never know anything up here according to our family when they ask questions, so my daughter will be very happy because she's been really wondering and prying. So I'm sure I'm passing on the congratulations from her. She's a graduate of Memorial, so congratulations to all of you. We look forward to so many great things to come out of the schools. And if you're here to support somebody and would like to slip out, this is your opportunity, or you can stay for the rest of the evening. It's up to you.
Madam Superintendent, our new principals at the high school, one's a UT graduate and the other one is an A&amp;M graduate. And I'm looking for some competition.
Thank you.
Jeremy, you gotta stay for the whole meeting.
No, you don't. You don't have to stay.
And we're gonna put you tied.
You have a beautiful family, your kids are...
Yes, you do. Congratulations.
Jeremy, get outta here. See you later, friends.
Hey, you did the job.
I'll take 'em home, Jeremy.
I won't. No kids for me. I've already done that rodeo.
You sure you don't want one? I can give you one. This already told me she's ready to go back to college, and it's only been a few days.
Nina, with you sitting on the front row, are you thinking we might have some questions?
I like seeing her sitting on the front row. Normally, if she has bad news, you can't find her out there.
Well, there's a lot of excitement out there, but we'll try to make it work in here with the noise. Brings us to item number two, consideration and possible approval of the percent of midpoint salary increases for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mr. Kendrick, a second by Ms. Morgan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible approval on additional personnel for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consideration and possible approval of the pre-kindergarten grant-funded teachers for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the early college high school district coordinator position, A04-240 days.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Mr. Kendrick has a question.
We have one early... Do we have more than one early college high school campus besides Pasadena High School?
We do not, but you'll remember as part of our bond, as well as our strategic plan, in 2017, we'll be adding all the other high schools. So we'll be bringing this person on to get ready for that, because it's gonna be a major undertaking, working with our partnership with San Jac. Karen can elaborate on what they'll be doing as we bring these campuses on, but I know screening students, teachers, a lot of that.
That's the main reason we're starting this early. She'll start this... He or she'll start August 1st, but this person will do the recruiting for that, all four high schools next class. So that means getting to all of the schools, producing the brochures, and advertising to the eighth graders for the following year, and then helping hire the deans that we hope to hire in December, that'll start in March if we go according to plan, and then just doing all of the work necessary with the architects over that next year to have everything ready for the following year to start the four new early college high schools.
Okay, I understand that, but we just, in this book, have a proposal with no receipt of bids for early high school campuses. And that may or may not be postponed. If that's the case, do we still move forward with this? Because that could be a delay of at least a year.
I believe, and Dr. Powell can correct me, that if the building would be delayed, then we would delay that also, because this is... Be a job that would start the year before the early college high schools start.
They would go hand in hand together. I know Mr. Fornoff's gonna explain a little bit more about how we're proceeding with the bid process, because we didn't have the success we needed, but they would go hand in hand. We're not gonna bring this person on until we're ready to open doors.
Thank you.
And since this is a new position, so we have a new complete job description for this individual?
Yes, I have job descriptions with me if you'd like to see those. Do you want me to pass those around?
You know, did I misunderstand something just now? We're not gonna bring this person on until we're ready to open the doors?
Well, we're bringing them on a year ahead of time to recruit and to make sure we're ready, and San Jac's ready. This is a huge undertaking, not only by our district, but San Jac as well. But if we're finding out through the bid process we're not gonna be ready, then we would postpone the position as well. Our hope is, and we feel like now that we're breaking that up, and we'll talk about that later, we're gonna have more success.
This is going to take an extremely qualified person.
Absolutely, and we'll make sure that that's who we get. We'll look until we get that person.
Any further questions? Did you want to add anything, Karen?
No, I just think it's an essential position, and I think your question is well-taken, that we want it one year ahead of opening the schools.
I agree.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, thank you. Consideration and possible approval of the renewal of contract for RFQ number 14-046 for employee benefits and insurance consulting services.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, sorry.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval to non-renew the term contract of Susan Livonius, instructional materials coordinator, effective at the end of the 2015-16 school year.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of the contract corrections.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, certified personnel is for information only. Section five, educational section, item number one, consideration and possible approval to district-wide application for a TEA low attendance waiver, which occurred on April 18th.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, consideration and possible approval to cap enrollment at overcrowded campuses.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the Gardens Elementary turnaround plan for the 2016 school year.
Some move, second.
A motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
We do have a brief presentation.
Okay.
All right, so tonight, I am here to present to you, as mandated by the state, the Gardens turnaround plan. And this is something that has to be approved by the school board. So as you know, this is our third year for Gardens Elementary to be in required improvement status, and after a campus has been identified as unacceptable for two consecutive school years, the commissioner shall order the campus to prepare and submit a campus turnaround plan. This is something new. In the past, we were doing a reconstitution plan, and the state changed their legislation to now require a turnaround plan. We are hoping that because of the improvement, the drastic improvement that we've seen in Gardens this year, that we'll be able to throw this plan away, which we won't do, because we really think the plan is very good, and we'll continue to move Gardens along, but it won't be because it's required by the state, but rather because we know we're doing the best thing for kids. So Gardens has moved from reconstitution to turnaround. Again, we're in year three, improvement required, and that's what's now triggered the turnaround plan that would begin August 2016 if we remain in improvement-required status. So I just want to highlight for you, the campus turnaround plan. You do actually have all of the text and all of the plan in your board book, so I'm gonna make highlights of the things that we think are the most important. One of the things that we will be giving to you, we have posted this to the faculty and to parents, and have collected their feedback. Hope has a copy of that feedback card copy for you, if you'd like that. She also has it on a flash drive for each of you, because it's pretty extensive. All of the Spanish that you find, we do also have copies of that translated into English to help you through the comments from parents. But this is what they were reflecting on, so our next... What we've been working on at Gardens for the last three years is the PLC process, where we are planning together, planning common assessments, and then providing intervention enrichment just in time, based on what the kids do or do not know. So every three weeks, they've begun developing these common assessments, testing the kids, seeing if they've learned what they were supposed to, and then intervening immediately instead of waiting for report cards and those kinds of things. So we're gonna fine-tune some of what happens in that intervention process. We feel like we've really gotten to a good place of the planning, following the curriculum, and using the common assessment process, but we feel like we can still do a better job of, once we identify the struggling learners, making sure that we have effective tiered intervention systems. So what do we do when we find out that they're not doing well? So again, this is aligned to our previous plan, but it's the next step. So we're not getting rid of anything that we've been doing, because it's worked so well, but we're moving on. And you guys can stop me anytime, I don't mind. Anyway, so we're gonna look at RTI structure that really does meet the individual student learning needs that we have, support teachers' professional development if their class is not making the progress they need to, and create safe, satisfying learning environments during that. What we've been calling, and we've been talking to you all about for the last couple of years, PI time, planned intervention and enrichment time built within the school day. That's what we think really is making the difference for our kids. So we're gonna ensure that the barriers to student performance, teacher practices, and parents engagement will be eliminated by designing a specific PD that supports this instruction intervention, by modeling good instruction and coaching for teachers who are struggling or trying to grow, analyzing data to track the student performance, and then teachers collaborating in lesson planning and in intervention planning. We're gonna ensure barriers to student performance, teacher practices, and student engagement will be eliminated by establishing lesson plans and data protocols for consistency across grade levels, performing intermittent checks for RTI implementation to fidelity, so that means principals walking through during PI time and making sure it's happening the way we planned it, and communicating the processes to parents. And I was really impressed with the parent comments. I hope you have time to look at those, because they're very excited about the next steps and the plans for our kids, and very complimentary of what's already been going on at Gardens. They're very, very thankful for the education their kids are getting right now, and they can see the changes and the difference. So here's the timeline. We submitted an original plan to TEA and got feedback from them, and then actually rewrote the plan, because we wrote in what we have been doing for the last two years that we feel like is leading to the success. We wrote a new plan, giving next steps. They approved that plan. We gave that to parents, and the staff, and the SBDM, who also approved it, and now we're here with you, hoping to approve the plan. And then we'll submit that to TEA. Commissioner will approve those plans mid-June, and then hopefully, we will only be doing it after that, because we love kids and we know this is great for them, but we will also do it because the commissioner says to, if the school is not out of required improvement. So I think that concludes what I had to share with you. I am very, very proud of the work at Gardens Elementary. Mr. Lehman and Ms. Liznoski, Mrs. Wright, Glenda Shields, our PSP, has been a wonderful administrative team, a great leadership team. The leaders of the teacher leaders of their at Gardens are absolutely phenomenal. They have taken the knocks and the hits. We have had hard conversations there for three years, talking about, we know you love kids, but we have to do this differently. We're not meeting their academic needs, and they have rolled up their sleeves, they have worked hard, and they have changed what's happening at that school, and it is a beautiful testimony to what teachers and administrators can do if they believe in kids. And it has been absolutely fantastic. Region four came through, and it said, this is a model of what reconstitution should be like. The attitudes of our teachers and our administration, and the support that they've received from you guys, is absolutely amazing, and it's why you guys are on the board. So I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Lindsay and that team. Y'all stop it over there.
I wanted to ask...
Yes, you may ask a question. I just... You guys are great, so let's give them a big round of applause. Sorry, Kenny.
I'm one year into this, but I'm sorry, I don't know all these people that are on this list, and I wanted to find out who Lindsay was, because apparently...
Lindsay, stand up, girlfriend. She's a rock star. And Linda Wright, Linda, we could not live without Linda.
That was my next one.
We do not want to live without her. I'm telling you what, she's wonderful.
I had several questions when I read this, because this is my first hour that I looked at.
Hope it's the last one.
And I do too, and I know in a district that we're so proactive, this is one of those reactive moments, and all I can say is everyone I had talked to had said the same thing about Lindsay, Linda, and what you guys are bringing to the table. So thank you very much for hopefully bringing us out of the woods on this one.
It's great for kids.
Does anyone have any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, thank you. Consideration and possible approval of the partnership between Pasadena Independent School District and Houston Methodist St. John's Hospital.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Question. Okay. What is... I see it says here, Methodist will fund a portion of the salary of the PISD district athletic trainer at $75,000. So Methodist is paying $75,000 of this individual's salary, correct?
That's correct, and John or Rodney, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but that's correct.
And then it says annually, provide two sports medicine scholarships of $2,500, which is great. Then it says the district will assume financial responsibility for the remaining amount of the salary due. What is the remaining? Did I miss something, or what is the remaining?
Well, it's the difference of the $75,000, what that individual actually makes, so we can get you that amount.
Okay, does that just open-ended, or...
No, no, it's based on his salary. I don't have that with me, John, but there is a difference.
I can't vote on anything, I don't know what the money is.
Well, we have a salary schedule, he can only make so much, Mr. Fornoff.
Well, do we have a district... Do we have a... Are we gonna be paying this guy the district's salary?
He's been on our staff for several years, and we'll be paying him a district salary. That's correct. He's on our pay scale.
What is that?
John's coming up.
Based on the salary schedule that the board approved for next year, that individual's on the teacher's salary scale, 240 days, his salary will be approximately $84,800.
So the difference.
All right, thank you. How much? Marshall, let him hear you.
We're picking about $9,000.
Thanks for the help.
Any other?
I have a question. How long is this agreement for?
Rodney, how long will this be in effect?
This is the first time we've gone for that long of a term, isn't it?
Our first couple of years with Methodist, we went three years, and then after that, it was a year.
Memorial.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Memorial was three years, and then after that, it was a yearly contract.
And so, in an emergency, and a student has to go to the hospital, they have to go all the way down to St. John's on NASA Road 1.
Do you want to come to the microphone? I thought the representative, too, is here from Methodist. You want to introduce him while you're at it?
Jase Duke from Methodist.
And I met with him personally when we discussed this agreement, so there's lots of options. If you don't mind, that'd be great.
So one of the things that we are providing is our facilities are located around you, is the Houston Methodist system. We have the St. John campus, we have downtown, and we have San Jac and Baytown. However, we do not intend for every kid to come to us. We understand that you have great providers here in this community, parents have a choice where they go. We just want to be, you know, tied to a district that is proactive with kids. We have a strong foundation in providing these services across the greater Houston area, and we just would like to partner with Pasadena ISD to continue what we're doing in your community as well. But yeah, we don't expect that for them to have to go, there will never be a quota of these kids have to go there, placed on anyone by us.
Thank you.
Now Rodney, I know in the past, there was a doctor, actually he was a surgeon, that would show up to football games. Was that on his own free will, or...
That was part of our contract with Memorial Hermann, but the same will occur with Methodist. They will have...
So what we are going to do is, we'll also supply physicians to cover games. We're not just using ours, there's a physician here in this district that's been here for a long time. We're not coming in to remove that relationship. He will still be actively participating. We're not here to disrupt anything. With Dr. Kirkwood. One of the other things that's different with our agreement this year than previous years, we are also funding a position through the hospital that will float to assist your current athletic trainers, and also at your junior high levels as well. So instead of the, you know, the 10, 11, counting Randy, that do a great job in this district, we want to provide someone that is in this district, you know, as one of our employees, that is also helping you out. So in addition to the money that we're providing, we're also implying an employee as well.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, one last thing. I want to tell you, Methodist Hospital is an excellent, excellent group of hospitals, and I think you're a great partner.
I'm excited about kicking off this partnership. I see a lot of benefits for our students and for our, of course, athletic staff.
Kicking off the partnership?
There you go. Getting ready for some football.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the contract with Kuzmit Consulting Services to provide professional development for teachers and administrators for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move, second.
Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number six, consideration and possible approval of participating in the PSAT and MSQT and PSAT 8-9 Early Participation Program 2016-17.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, consideration and possible approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Department of Defense Youth Program, Starbase 2.0, and Pasadena ISD.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes.
How many students do you anticipate will be participating in this?
Probably at the most 40, 20 per school.
Thank you, Karen.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number eight, consideration and possible approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Pasadena Independent School District and Psych On Site.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
The summit's going to provide the clinician with information on grades, attendance, and behavior for students they are serving. Psych On Site will receive payment for services through Medicaid, Texas Health, STEPS, CHIPS, and so forth. Who's going to do the billing, the school district or this group?
Will Mr. DeWolf come up and answer that question for us? Principal at the summit.
Psych On Site will be responsible for capturing any funds for services. And they'll do that through their own support system that they're gonna be supplementing with the actual clinical person that'll be on staff, or on site, I should say, pardon me.
And approximately, how many students do you feel will have the need for this service?
When we were looking at a lot of our students and the students that we're servicing, we could... We will probably... They're anticipating maybe a caseload of maybe 40 to 60 students at one time. Now, this will be rotating. They're looking at performing short-term intervention, as well as short-term therapy with the students and their families.
So this will be individual therapy, or as a group?
No, ma'am, it will be individual, and what we'd be looking at is, it would also include family members as necessary, and that would be up to the decision of the clinician.
You bet.
This is great, Robert.
Thank you, sir.
Great to have the family to say anything about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number nine, consideration and possible approval of the ongoing EZ-Tech purchases from sole source provider, learning.com, from IMA funds.
Some move, second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 10, consideration and possible approval for renewal of a sole source agreement with EduForial Inc. for the premium suite, school objects, and lead-forward module support renewal.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 11, consideration and possible approval for the Pasadena ISD sports medicine students to travel to Orlando, Florida during spring break, March 12 through 18, 2017.
Some move, second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
How many students are we talking about at the approximately $1,300?
We have several of our representatives. Who was gonna be our spokesperson? Jeremy, and he is from Pasadena High School, Jeremy Jackson.
Hello, hello. All right, so at $1,300, that's 40 students, and so between all five high schools, and that's roughly like eight kids per high school. And so I know Doby's got somewhere between 10 and 20, depending on there, and we've got bigger groups there, so we're hoping that it's closer to 60, but... So 40 kids, and so... And each school is doing their own fundraising, and that cost at almost all the schools is not gonna be the $1,300 solely on the student, but that's the cost, and then the students are responsible for, depending on who we fundraise.
So your goal is to have between 40 and 60 students to be able to participate in this?
Yes, ma'am.
That's great, thank you.
Can I make a comment? No, you can't go. Okay. No, I'm not going. Couple of years ago, I got hurt, got my back hurt, and I went to a doctor, then I went to a chiropractor. Chiropractor sent me to a massage therapist. I didn't feel good about that kind of deal. So then I went over to Doby, and I went and saw that trainer right there, and he told me some things I could do, and I feel like I... I mean, no offense to the doctors, or the chiropractor, or the masseuse, or whatever, but that guy right there helped me. And I encourage, if you ever have a problem, go over there and talk to one of these trainers during their off period, of course, but they can tell you some exercises and so on and so forth that'll get you back in gear. But I don't know if I've ever thanked you, but I really do, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. And y'all look sharp in your shirts. That's all I gotta say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Section six, student achievements. Section six, student achievements. We have seventh and eighth grade pentathlon achievements. Lots of plenty of students there. Section seven, policy updating review. We don't have any this meeting. Section eight, financial section. Item number one, consideration and possible approval of the budget amendments.
I move that we approve the budget amendments. Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
I have one question. Page 144, to increase the tax office budget, was that for the equipment for the tax office that I questioned under the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting? Okay, thanks, ma'am.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the student accident UIL insurance for the 2016-17 school year.
Some move. Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the meal price increase for the 2016-17 school year.
Move we approve the price increase.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Any discussion? I just had a question earlier that I asked. I know we have around 80% of students on free and reduced lunches. Is that still the case?
That's correct. Mary, do you want to come up to the mic and just explain? I was trying to do a beautiful job. I'm not so sure I did when I was asked a question about the reason for our increase because I know it has to do with a federal government requirement. So if you'll just explain that real quick.
Due to the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act, every year now we get a paid lunch equity tool, a calculator that we're sent once a year about this time. We enter in our information, participation, how many meals we've served, what we're charging, and it spits out basically what we have to charge for the coming year. And so we, if we don't charge what the tool tells us, TDA can withhold our funding. And so that's kind of how we come to that. And then that's why you've seen a few more increases in the last three or four years than you have in the previous six, so.
Much better job. I said, because the federal government told us to?
Basically, yes.
Yeah.
Their reasoning was they, and did not happen in this district, but in some districts, paid lunches were, or free lunches were covering the paid lunches, and they don't want that. They want paid lunches to be paid and the free lunches, and not, basically to supplement each other.
Yeah.
And so, and we bounce between 78 to 80% depending on the time of year, on free and reduced numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section nine, Operations Section, item number one, consideration and possible approval of the Budget and Design Services Agreement for the renovations to science classrooms at South Houston Intermediate School Project.
Some move.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
I do. Has this been brought to the board before? I didn't realize that we had these inequities at South Houston Intermediate.
I know that we've talked about it repeatedly. I'm not sure if we've brought it to the board because this is coming out of Kevin's budget. It's not part of the bond project or anything like that. Do you recall, Kevin, if we've brought this to the board? We've done an analysis through Becky Benner and some of the other specialists in science, Alina Grinstead was a part of that, on what our needs were because of the curriculum and the need for quality labs. And South Houston Intermediate rose to the top. It's not our only one, but...
That's what's going to be my next question.
Yeah, we have a list. We're taking baby steps to address it. So we started with a portable science lab last year at Southeast Intermediate, which helped. But this is kind of a permanent solution to some of their needs. And then again, we have a list of other campuses that we need to continue to focus on as monies come available.
And my question is, is are these additions going to be made in the portables or we're going to try to fix the in-building inequities?
Interior renovations.
Okay.
Within the building.
It's upgrades, electrical, plumbing, but we're within the existing envelope of the classrooms, so.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, consideration and possible approval of the additional design services for the Thomas Hancock Elementary School Project.
Some move. Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number three, consideration and possible approval of the HVAC Testing and Balancing Services Agreement for the new Doby ninth grade campus project.
Some move. Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number four, consideration and possible approval for rejection of all bids submitted for the CSP 16-023, early college high school annexes at Sam Rayburn High School, South Houston High School, and Pasadena Memorial High School.
Some move.
Second. Question.
Have a motion by Ms. Morgan, a second by Mr. Fernandez. Yes.
Were the bids way out of line or did you not get enough bidders or?
We only had one bid and it was way out of line. We couldn't bring it to recommendation, so.
You think there's a cause for only one bid?
We do. And I think a lot of it is because of the way the project was structured with all three projects together. So we immediately split them out and our architect worked on that immediately. And we actually have them out on the street right now and plan on getting that rebid first couple of weeks in June and bringing the contractors to the June board meeting.
Are you talking, are y'all talking to any of our ex-contractors that are bidding work and hearing what their complaints and so on and so forth are?
Yeah, this will be a prime project. These smaller projects or some of the smaller contractors that don't, cannot bond large projects. So we're getting the word out to many of the local smaller GCs, and we're getting good feedback. So I think we're going to get a lot of, a lot of activity on it.
Are you getting any complaints on our rating system?
No.
Hmm, okay.
So are all of the drawings complete and out and ready to go?
They are.
And they're going to be bid individually?
That's correct.
Kevin, you say that a lot of the smaller contractors will be, hopefully be bidding on some of these jobs. We're going to do due diligence and make sure that these guys have good recommendations, right?
That's right.
Okay.
And we've worked with a lot of the smaller ones that are interested in it.
Good.
What, what's, what size projects do you not need a bond for a school business?
We need a bond for everything.
They all need bond, but it's just the bonding capacity.
Okay, I misunderstood you. I thought you said we were looking at some smaller contractors that had problems with bonding.
Big bonds.
Big bonds.
A lot of the general contractors have so much work that they're kind of maxed out with their bonding capacity.
Right.
So the smaller projects make more sense for them.
Any further comments or questions?
Do you think that this is going to help us get it done quicker?
It may. If we have three different contractors, we might have a good focus on each individual project instead of being kind of split. And that was one of the project's downfalls too, is that the larger general contractors really couldn't, didn't have the personnel to have three different superintendents, three project managers. So I think that's a lot of the reason why we didn't get a lot of activity on it as well. So we'll have a lot more focus on each individual project.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Kevin. Item number five, consideration and possible approval of the change order number one for the South Houston High School track replacement project.
Some move. Second.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion?
Credit amount, that's a good thing.
Amen.
As long as it's in good shape, those people deserve a decent track out there.
It's a great track. I rode on the golf cart, right, Dr. Fulon?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Section 10, construction update. There is none at this time. Section 11, miscellaneous section. Item number one, communications for information only, no additional public comments. And we will now adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee to deliberate the appointment of a public officer or officers. We will reconvene shortly.
Hope, are you staying in here?
I'll do as much as I can.
I'm going to leave my purse.
Okay. That takes us to item number four, reorganization of the board.
Madam President, I nominate Nelson Sullivan for the position of President.
Hold on one second. I didn't have that written down.
Question?
No.
So bad.
Take care of your second.
Call for other nominations.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam President, I nominate Fred Roberts for Vice President.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Kendrick. We've had discussion. All in favor? Any opposed?
Now y'all know where we've been.
Motion passes.
We were fighting for the bottom.
No, we were, we were actually, this one is the one that we were having problems with. Madam President, I nominate Kenny Fernandez for Secretary.
Give me the 20.
Have a motion by Mrs. Morgan, a second by Mr. Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I nominate Vicki Morgan for Assistant Secretary. She's been here 30 years, you know.
30 years.